Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Los Angeles City Council. Today is Tuesday, June 21st, our summer solstice 2005. Madam Clerk, if you'll please call the roll. Madam Clerk, if you'll call the roll, please. Oh, we're only at six. So before we start, we're waiting a quorum. We have six members present. Thank you very much. We have a special presentation and a special guest here today, and I'll turn it over to Council President Alex Padilla to make the introduction. Mr. Padilla.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Colleagues, I know we're just shy of a quorum. Committees are breaking upstairs and members are on their way down. But to be respectful of the Cardinals' time, I thought we should go ahead and get started. As you all know, every Tuesday morning, the first meeting of the week, we have agendized our moment of inspiration. And I can't think, over the last several months, over the last several years, what would be more inspiring than to hear from Cardinal Mahoney on his experience on his recent trip to Rome. I think this council chambers, the entire city, and really the entire world was captivated in the final days of his physical life here of Pope John Paul II. And the experience of his passing, the experience and reflections upon his life, the experience of the conclave, and the selection of a new pope. Not just for Catholics in the country and around the world, but for non-Catholics as well, recognizing that Pope John Paul II reached out to people of all faiths and really loved young people in a very special way. What he did for the world in terms of democracy, what he did for the world in terms of spirituality as well. And so we've invited Cardinal Mahoney to come with us, and he's allowed this day to be the day on his calendar where he's joining us for a few words of inspiration. And I believe, in recognition of modern technology, you have a PowerPoint as well. So if you would please join me in welcoming Cardinal Roger Mahoney.
Thank you very much, Council President Padilla and members of the council and other guests who are here. It is a great honor to be here because we actually have some Los Angeles connections to what went on in April. We have, this city has two Cardinals. Cardinal Regali, who's now the Archbishop of Philadelphia, is an Angelino, was in the seminary with me. And of course Pope John Paul II was here in 1987 for 48 hours and two big events, outdoor events, one at the Coliseum and the other at Dodger Stadium. So what I'd like to do is just to present to you today some of the images of those days. I thought that would be the quickest way to do this. You can do this in three different ways. We're going to start with the funeral part. We'll then go to the conclave and then post-conclave. This you will see is in the papal, one of the great papal meeting rooms where the Holy Father John Paul II was laid out. And that was an opportunity for all of us to come together for that first viewing of him and to remember his great contributions. This is another view in that Sala Clementina. Of course, all of the buildings over there have extraordinary artwork, very inspiring everywhere you turn. This is a view of moving the Pope, Pope John Paul II, from up in that Sala Clementina, down through St. Peter's Square into St. Peter's Basilica. Very, very moving procession, singing subdued hymns, very reverential, and I'd have to say primarily joyful, gratitude to God for these wonderful years. Now, the preparations for the actual funeral took place in St. Peter's, and this shows the Holy Father now in the coffin. And there are some final rituals about to take place before the funeral mass. This shows the Archbishop Jevish on the right, who was the personal secretary to the Pope, and Archbishop Marini, the Papal Master of Ceremonies. There are a number of traditions, and one of them is placing this white linen cloth over the head and face of the Pope. This shows a number of coins minted during his pontificate being placed in the coffin. Interestingly enough, there actually ended up with three coffins. This cedar one, which was viewed most by everyone on television, later was put into a little bit larger one made out of lead, and then that went into yet a larger wood one that were finally buried, as we'll see in a moment. This shows the two of the Cardinals, Cardinal Ratzinger on the left, who became the new Pope, as well as Cardinal Martinez, the Camerlengo, signing documents that would then be placed officially recognizing the life and the death of Pope John Paul II. And this shows those documents being placed in this lead tube, which is then sealed, and then that is placed also in the casket with the Holy Father for future historical purposes. This shows the top being placed on the casket and to, while everything so far you've seen has had a long tradition of handling these things, they're using those power-hand screwdriver things that you buy at Sears to attach the coffin. So craftsmanship was well represented. And this is a final view of the great high altar in St. Peter's and the baldacchino of Bernini, and about to move the casket outside. This shows the incredible turnout to view the Holy Father in St. Peter's. It is the largest attended and viewed funeral in the history of the world. It was absolutely, absolutely extraordinary, the number of people, the millions of people who came and waited in line for 10, 12, 13 hours in order to pass by and pay their respects. And I'd have to say, the city of Rome really handled it all very well. They were very, very efficient in handling all the crowds and the influx, but, so people as far as you can see. And because the funeral mass itself attracted millions, they set up huge screens in all of the major piazzas and stadiums all around Rome to accommodate the pilgrims. So it was a great tribute to this man's outreach to the world, as Council President pointed out. This shows looking towards St. Peter and all the people who had gathered for the funeral. And then this is looking out from St. Peter's out to areas, you see various countries represented with their flags. And now we're going to see the tremendous dignitaries. 138 countries were represented, as well as Orthodox, Jewish, Arabs, people from Asia, as well as Western political leaders. This shows a large contingent of, these are not religious leaders, these are government leaders from the Middle East, those countries, and they were turned out in a very large number for this event. And then you'll see President Bush and Mrs. Bush accompanied by the ambassador, and behind them, not too visible on the screen, but behind them, to the right is former President Bill Clinton and Condoleezza Rice, and then George Bush '41. Then the funeral mass itself was held outside, and the sermon at that was given by Cardinal Ratzinger. This shows the body being carried out in the simple cedar wooden casket, the one that was closed inside, and it will be simply laid on the ground there, very near the place where the Pope, over 26 years, himself celebrated many masses, as well as every Wednesday had his audiences for anyone who would come. And then they're placing the casket then on the, on the ground and placing a book of Gospels on top of it. And then this shows the Cardinals there for mass. I happen to be there at the upper right corner. Being tall in these events really is helpful. You can see, and also, I'm getting older, so my seniority is getting better. Of the 115 Cardinals, I'm number 33, so I get good seats all the time. This shows the same scene, Cardinal Ratzinger's in the middle of that screen, that you can't see the Cardinals at the funeral mass. Then this is another view, the funeral mass and the casket. We had very good weather. It was a perfect day. It rained late that night, but the day of the funeral was beautiful. And this shows the Cardinals and others with Cardinal Ratzinger at the altar for the mass itself. And then another view of the Cardinals on each side during the mass with the casket there in the front. There's another view, and the leaders of the Eastern Catholic Rites also. We have the, you're used to the Western Catholic Rites and the Latin Rite, but we have also a very large Eastern Rite of Catholics, and they had a very, a large role at the end. And this shows one of the patriarchs of the Catholic Eastern Rites incensing the body, the remains of Pope John Paul II. You may have noticed on television, they had placed a book of Gospels on top of the casket, and there was a breeze blowing, and the pages would blow back and forth during the course of the mass. And finally, towards the end of the mass, one gust came up and just blew the book shut. It was almost a parable of the life and ministry of this man, as he was faithful to the Gospel, and as the book closed, kind of his life closed. It was a very, very moving symbol. The casket then, if you recall, if you saw it on television, was then carried up the steps to go into the Vatican for burial. But before they went inside, they turned around and tilted the casket down, almost a final farewell to all of the people who were there and reviewing. It was a very touching moment for everyone. And this shows the casket then being carried back into St. Peter's for burial. And that's a view of the inside of St. Peter's after the burial. There were eight more days of masses every afternoon, celebrated by different members of Rome, the Church, and other leaders. And then this just shows some of the people who were there, including some of our Los Angeles people. There were many Angelinos. I ran into Angelinos constantly who were there in Rome on pre-arranged tours that happened to be there during those days. And then before the conclave, we held meetings every day and a chance to get to know each other. This is one of the meeting rooms. We only met here once because of the lack of space, but at that point, there were fewer than 60 Cardinals in town. Hanging on the walls everywhere in the Vatican are these incredible art treasures. In fact, there's a small waiting room outside the office where you meet the Pope, and on one wall, this is just a small waiting room, like you have in your offices here. On one wall is a Raffaello original painting. Another is a Michelangelo, and I forgot what the other one was, but these are all works of art hanging in waiting rooms. This is myself and Cardinal Egan from New York going into the meeting hall where we had our daily meetings. And then myself and Cardinal Rivera from Mexico City, departing after, we usually met around three hours, three and a half hours a day, a great opportunity to know the Cardinals around the world. And these are just informal gatherings, like with the city government. The most productive time is at coffee breaks and lunch. That's where you get the real business done, you know, and discuss things. The Papal Conclave, this shows us going into this new hotel that was built during the time of John Paul II. Up till that time, all the papal elections were held in the Vatican, in the Sistine Chapel, but, but the quarters were the offices of the Vatican. So just picture for a moment, one of your offices here in the city hall, and they would come in and put a cot in there, and that was about it. Then there were, because of the secrecy, the, all the windows had seals on them, so the Cardinals couldn't open the windows to get any fresh air. There was one bathroom for about 25 Cardinals each. It was pretty grim. So Pope John Paul II had this hotel built, which is used for visiting clergy and others during the course of the year, but during this time, it was emptied and became our home. This shows the Sistine Chapel. Unfortunately, the break in the image there, you can't see the little pipe that goes up, but it's at the far right towards the, the lower part of the roof of the Sistine Chapel. Sistine Chapel is about the size of your council quarters here, a little bit longer, has no windows because of all the artwork on the walls and the ceiling by Michelangelo. This is probably one of the most moving moments for all of us as we process into the Sistine Chapel. I had been there many times to view the Sistine Chapel as a tourist and to see the artwork, but to process in singing the litany of the saints for this very sacred purpose completely dramatically changed the whole meaning of that space. It became a very special spiritual space for us, and also very humbling. Here I am, raised in the San Fernando Valley. I kept asking myself, what am I doing here? You know, it just, all of us felt the same way. How did it ever happen that I would be here, walking into this 16th century chapel, which had been the scene of so many elections of Popes and all kinds of activity over the years? It was set up with two rows on each side, and we all had to take this oath of office there on the Bible in the center of the Sistine Chapel. And then we were seated, you can see us there on both sides, with the Last Judgment right there at the very end. And of course, as you know, that all of the artwork has been totally restored into the original brilliant colors of the past. And this shows a couple more views of the Cardinals. I was on the top row, three in, again because of seniority, you're seated by seniority, and seated next to a Cardinal from Santo Domingo, one from Kinshasa, Congo, one from Italy. So it was really, the universality was tremendous. And that's just another view of, of the Cardinals there offering a prayer. Now, this up in smoke, this is the first time they used the new smoke system, which was supposed to end the confusion about whether it's white or black, and actually just created more confusion. On the right, the stove on the right is the one where they would put the ballots with some clumps of straw. The one on the left, there were these special cartridges, and if they put a black one in and lit it, it created black smoke. If they put a white one in and lit it, it created white smoke. It became obvious after the first vote that the straw and ballots always burn faster and quicker than the color. So I thought, well, that's simple. Start the color one first, you know, then you have the color, then burn the other. Well, it didn't do it. And so we kept getting gray smoke outside as weeks went on. So the right side, the ballots and the straw, the left side, the coloring, and in principle it worked, in practice it did not. So it's probably been referred back to committee. Now, the balloting is done differently than you do here. We had no electronics. We had the old-fashioned way, no hanging chads, no bubble things to fill in with your pen to make it legal. We just wrote a last name on the ballot we had. Those were all counted out loud, et cetera. It was the old-fashioned way of having balloting. It was very interesting, very effective, no hangups, no electoral commissions, no Supreme Court, no anybody else. So it went very nicely. The Pope was elected on the fourth ballot, as you, as you may know, and took the name of Benedict for two reasons. One, Benedict XV was Pope during the First World War and dedicated himself to ending war and conflict. And our new Pope said, we still have war, we still have conflict, I want to also work at bringing peace. And then this shows us going into the Sistine Chapel the following morning, Wednesday morning for the first mass with the new Pope. And so the scenes before of us in our red robes, we're now in official vestments. This is the first mass celebrated by Pope Benedict XVI, and again, extremely memorable. And that's another view of all the Cardinals present there. That's another view. Then he took a picture with all of us in another part of the building there. And then some first images of the Pope going to, an overview of Vatican City, just going into this tower behind the Vatican Gardens, and he's looking out over the whole Vatican City, as well as the city of Rome. And that's the Pope signing some first documents there. The one on the right, he's saying, "Good luck, Mayor Han." The second one, he's saying, "Good luck, Antonio Villarigosa." So, nonpartisan, you know, supporting both equally. And then there, that's a final picture of him in his official white robes. That's the coat of arms of the new Pope. I won't go into all of that, but it ends with the coat of arms. And a final note, on Friday morning, we all had a chance to meet him. He's sitting in a chair in exactly the same place, in the Sala Clementina, where Pope John Paul II had been laid out. And he has an extraordinary memory. He knows all the Cardinals by name, where you're from, and the minute you walk up to him, he starts speaking to you in your own language. You don't have to tell him who you are, where you're from. He knows who you are and immediately starts speaking to you in your own language, and I ask for a special blessing upon our wonderful city and the archdiocese which he readily gave. That ends our little excursion, our inspiration. And there's actually another Los Angeles connection because another Angelino, Archbishop William Laveda, has been appointed by the new Pope to take over as head of that congregation in Rome. He's the Archbishop of San Francisco. We're classmates in the seminary. He's from Long Beach, like Cardinal Regali. He went to seminary at Camrio with me. He's now going to Rome. He will be a Cardinal in the next time, which will give Los Angeles three active Cardinals at the same time. I don't think that's ever been done anyplace in the history of the world. Three Cardinals at the same time, at the same age. So Los Angeles is taking over the Vatican. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Cardinal. Mr. President? I think, Mr. LeBange.
I wanted to say, welcome home, and it was a tremendous celebration of Pope John Paul's life. Whether we agree or not with one's feelings all the time, the inspiration of a person, the person who goes out, and what is a message for us to leave this building and go out and help people in the city? That's what we should do all the time in a non-denominational way, because we're of government. But at the same point, the Pope, when he left and came to Los Angeles and went around the world, that was important for the world in its sense of things, whatever the message is, but to be out there. So I just wanted to reference that, and it was a very important time to recognize a man's life at that, and now we wish the new Pope well. But also, some great constituents of mine make the greatest bread in the world. The Monastery of the Angels is located in my district, and the nuns at the cloistered order the Monastery of the Angels, of which I was blessed, Bernard, one day, to be there and see not just your wife, not just your mother, but your grandmother there. He gets a triple crown for that. But this is great bread. I give it to you so you could share it, because you're an angel in the seat of angels. Thank you, Cardinal Mahoney. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Zine? And Mr. Zine wants to say a couple words as well.
Thank you, Cardinal Mahoney. I know that you have reached out with the cathedral to all parts of Los Angeles, all the different services that have taken place, sometimes non-denominational in the cathedral where traditionally Catholics worship. And I just wanted to extend my appreciation for what you showed us this morning, and also what you've done to embrace Los Angeles and all the people of Los Angeles. Open up the cathedral for all religions, all denominations. When it's either a joyful occasion or a sad occasion, you've opened that house of worship to all people. Other members of different clergy attend, and they speak to the, to the audience, to the congregant. So I want to personally thank you for reaching out to all the people of Los Angeles and the wonderful job you're doing. And I really appreciate viewing what many of us were able to see on television, to see it up close. Thank you.
Next, I'd like to recognize, apparently, the grandson, son, and husband of nuns, Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. President. Cardinal, thank you for that information in the, in the photo display. I watched that on television and just the remarkable several centuries of going through the process. And as I mentioned to you earlier today, my first remembrance of the Holy Father was Pius XII and Cardinal McIntyre. And so I dated myself with that. I read that in civics class. I wasn't here personally. But I'm appreciative that Zine stood up and spoke, and I told you, he's trying to get the prigatory by staying close to you and talking to you. He realizes heaven is out of the question, but he is trying to work himself through it. But I appreciate what you're doing. Also, as I mentioned to you before, my grandmother met you on the, the day that you came back, the celebration of becoming a Cardinal, and then got a chance to meet you again at the opening of the cathedral. And so now she thinks I'm important because I know you. And so I just want to say thank you for talking with her and giving her an opportunity to meet you.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. And thank you for the extraordinary presentation. Mr. Padilla?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Madam Clerk, I think the conclave has a quorum. If you'll call the roll.
Cardinals Garcia, Grulhan, LeBange, Lalo, Misakowski, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Smith, Villarigosa, Weiss, Zine, Padilla, 12 members present and a quorum, Mr. President.
First order of business?
Approval of the minute.
Okay. Mr. Zine moves. Mr. Parks seconds. Approved?
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Okay. Mr. Smith moves, and Ms. Perry seconds.
And, Mr. President, this is Tuesday, and there is a flag salute that has been agendized.
Okay. If we can ask Ms. Misakowski to please lead us in a salute to the flag. If I can ask everybody in chambers, please, to rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you. If I can have everyone's attention, please join with me. Mr. LeBange, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Misakowski. Next order of business.
Mr. President, this is the time for comments from the public on items not on council's agenda.
Okay. Now is the time for general public comment. We have a few public speaker cards. If you'd like to invite forward right now, Lynn Shapiro, Lilian Cohen, and Teri Walcheck for our first three speakers. Please, welcome, Mr. Shapiro. Oh, excuse me. Just before, Mr. Shapiro, Ms. Grul just was asked to say one quick thing. Ms. Grul?
Leonard, are you going to introduce your group that's with you today?
No, you introduce them, Wendy.
No, no, no. Please, I just wanted to make sure we had a great group of individuals from the Jewish Community Center in the San Fernando Valley, who's the current affairs class that's here, and they're discussing the issue of homeless. So we appreciate them being here today. We could ask you all to stand, please, and recognize the representatives from the San Fernando Valley City's Jewish Community Center.
Welcome to City Council Chambers. It's great to have you here.
And thank you, Leonard, for bringing them here today.
Thank you. Thank you, Wendy. That was a very nice bust you got for us. Compliments to the City Council. We appreciate it. The main thing I want to say here today is we're here on one subject, what the City Council is doing about the homeless situation. As far as I know, and I've been telling this to everybody, you haven't been doing much since 1982. since 1982. 1982 is over 20 years away, and it's time that somebody in here did something. So if you don't know what to do, we have about 10 people who are signed up to speak, will give you their ideas on what they think you want, what they think you should do. What we think you should do is back up the pioneering spirit that this council had. Ernie Bernati made the motion, before he retired from here, that you declared that the area an emergency, declare an emergency situation, that the homeless are people who are just a couple of blocks away from here, and if you don't know where the homeless are, just open the window and you can catch the smell. It's time that somebody understood what was happening here. Kenny Han made the motion, when he was a member of the Board of Supervisors, that the grand jury's recommendation be followed to declare LA a disaster area, a disaster area, for the situation that's existing, that we're not taking any motion or any memorance about. The Board of Supervisors just appropriated $20 million, according to the papers yesterday, in their annual budget, to do something about the homeless. That sets the way, it starts the thing off to have something doing, but somebody knows, that somebody's got to do something. When they ask me, why am I always talking about the condition of the homeless, in the current events class, I made the statement that it's something, you got to keep talking about it till somebody does something. And until the City Council and the Board of Supervisors decide that it's important enough to do anything about it, we're not going to do anything. I told people to write letters, to call, to send emails, but there's nothing like coming right out here and letting you know that we're interested in this thing. Now, I don't want to talk much anymore about this thing, but I'd like some of the members of the same class to talk. May I introduce some of the members?
Absolutely, we have some cards filled out, do you want me to go off of the cards?
I'd like to have our teacher from the class, Lillian Burton, speak first.
Great, we'll have hers first, thank you.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, please give me your attention, because I am a teacher. And my students, I would like you to know that those people are retired professionals, most of them have more education than I do, and every Tuesday morning, we meet and agonize over the inaction of the City Council in this particular matter. I want you to know that we attended a concert at the Music Center, it was a beautiful concert in the beautiful Music Center, and when we got in our car, we took a wrong turn and ended up in Skid Row. My friends were astonished that three or four blocks from this beautiful cultural center, you find what looks like Zimbabwe or a third world city in this of the richest, most beautiful cities in the country. Now, every morning, I read in the paper about gentrification in the city, and the attempt to make the city a moving, central meeting place for the community. I read about warehouses and old hotels being restored and beautifully remade to house young people of wealth. Here you are, you've got thousands of people living in cardboard boxes, eating trash, and right there in that area, you are going to sell condos in these old buildings for over a million dollars. I think this is absolutely shameful and a disgrace to this city, and I urge you to think of how you can restore the mental health establishment that Ronald Reagan destroyed, and restore these sick people to where they will be cared for, and create permanent housing for the rest of the people who are wandering the streets of Los Angeles. I thank you for your kind attention.
Now, isn't that a nice teacher? I'd like, I'd like Leib Friedman to speak next.
Thank you, and what I can do, Mr. Shapiro, is read all the names of members who have submitted cards in your public comment, and please come up in order of that tuition, introduce yourself. But I do have cards from Teri Walcheck, Estelle Bush, Lillian Burton, Edith Marcus, Emma Walcheck, Leib Friedman, Sylvia Saxon, and Adele Zager.
I'm Teri Walcheck. I am a psychologist, and the year that President Reagan had taken all the mentally ill people and put them on the street, we psychologists, social workers, excuse me, and psychiatrists, we met and talked about it, and bemoaned the fact that it was a tragedy to put these people out into the street. I feel strongly, as well as my colleagues, that people who are mentally disabled should be back in the institutions from which they came. I know that many of these people who are homeless are mentally disabled. They cannot do the things that normal people like us can do, and they find themselves in the street with their carts full of clothes, they walk, they stand on the freeway entrance. We have seen them all the time, they're right by the entrance where we use the freeway, they're always standing there with a poster saying they want some money, and it's pathetic. This is day in and day out. These people are too sick to be in the street, and they should be put back into the hospital.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is that it, Mr. Shapiro? Okay.
My name's Leib Friedman. I have resided in LA on and off since 1929. I remember when this city was the pride of the Golden Coast. But I did serve twice in the military of this country, and I'm proud of that, too. I served in World War II and Korea. But I've never seen what's happened in this city anywhere else. And I'm going to talk to you about a study that was conducted by the LA Homeless Services Authority. They received federal funds. What do you know, Washington finally sent us some money to go find out how many homeless people there are in LA County. And I'll tell you something, we've got 90,000, remember that, 90,000 homeless people in LA County. And of those 90,000, 57,000 were men, 24,000 were women, 39,000 were chronic substance users, and 9,700 were victims of domestic violence. Well, shame on us. If we can fund a war in Iraq, okay, then we should be able to do something about correcting this problem. We don't have enough money for police. The City Council will not vote money for an additional police. I was at a meeting in February, where ex-Mayor, well, Mayor Han was there at that time, and he told us about the city of LA, and I stood up and I asked him a question. I said, "Mr. Mayor, how much money would it take per family to hire the extra 2,000, 3,000 police officers that Los Angeles needs in a desperate way?" And he said about $100 a family. Well, shame on us, couldn't raise $100 a family, couldn't go and raise taxes, you people are the ones that are serving the people of Los Angeles, and you should stand up. I went down on Vermont Boulevard the other day, it was like going on the Burma Road, there were potholes, cracks, my God, my car almost shook apart. Why can't we fix the streets? Why can't we get more police? Why can't we address the homeless problem? We have a new mayor, well, let's put him to work with the City Council and get those issues going. We ask you to take action. Don't put it on your agenda on page 85, put it on number one on your agenda, and stand up for the people, all the people in this country that demand action. We're looking for you to do what you have to do. Thank you.
See, my name is Emile Walcik, and I am proud that I met Ms. Perry this morning, and she enlightened me on our public housing that was successful. In other words, the city of Los Angeles provided public housing, and in spite of some glitches here and there, it's working. So, please, council members, listen to Ms. Perry, she, I think, has a good handle on making a home for the homeless. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Shapiro, if this can be the last speaker from your delegation, we'd appreciate it, there's a lot of other cards, other people wish to speak on other issues as well.
Thank you. Yes, thank you. Good morning, and thank you for allowing me to say a few words. The preamble to our Constitution states, "We are a government of the people and for the people." I am very concerned about the homeless and the totals that are growing. Some time ago, a very wise economist by the name of John Kenneth Galbraith, who is now in his 90s, said, "The government that balances its budget is not taking care of its people." For many years, when my family was growing up, that was our situation. So it is for so many families. The homeless are our city's family, and we must take care of them. They now include many from the Iraq War. They need permanent housing.
My name is Adele Zager. I am a participant with the current events class from the Valley City's Jewish Community Center. We are a group of highly, highly concerned citizens, and we have many, many questions. And I have come to say that the county sheriff, Lee Laurie Baca, says that he is managing the largest institution for the care of mentally handicapped human beings without the aid of any full-time psychiatrist or psychologist. He was referring to the great number of homeless people in the county prison system who need mental care for their sickness. Don't you believe that anyone who is in need of expert care for either mental or physical diseases should be treated as soon as possible? Homelessness is not a disease, it's a symptom.
Good morning. My name is Estelle Bush, and I've been here many times, and been honored in this chamber many times, so it's a pleasure for me to be here today. I am the executive director of a company called Synthaxis Theater Company. We have done much work in the schools, and we have worked with the young people. And one segment of the homeless population that we have, that has been ignored or neglected completely, are the children. We have many children on the street, and that is the incubator for violence, drug use, alcoholism, violent crime. We have seen it erupt on the campuses in the high schools and the middle schools in the city today. So that is a very vital effort that we must make, to see that these homeless children and families are given security and opportunity for learning, and for opportunities to make their lives eventful ones. Thank you.
My name is Sylvia Saxon, and I, too, want to speak about the children. I don't know how many of the 90,000 homeless in this county are children, but I don't know how we can expect children with no roofs over their heads, without a bed to sleep in, and without a proper breakfast in the morning, to become contributing citizens. I think we have to do something to save them now.
Good morning, thank you for allowing us to speak to you. I know you care about this city because you're members of the City Council. It seems that a priority project for you to deal with is homelessness, which is such a blight on this city. Something must be done to create shelters for these people and provide for their needs. If you do the research and partner with business and industry, a wealthy city like this, like ours, could come up with more funds. This morning's paper, I understand, mentioned 20 million set aside for dealing with homelessness. That's good, but I hope you will take action to use these funds to begin to end homelessness, which is such an embarrassment to our city, which we do not want visitors to see. We have homelessness, but not hopelessness. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for allowing us to make this presentation.
Thank you very much.
Mr. President, I'd just like to say, I wish that the City Council take action to cooperate with the Board of Supervisors on that $20 million appropriation. You can at least do that, but the point is, you should cooperate with them and do something about this problem. It won't go away, it's with us to stay, we got to do something.
And our final speaker under public comment is Nikia Berry.
Good morning, my name is Nikia Berry, and I work with Minority AIDS Project, I'm a health educator. We work in the community doing HIV testing and also counseling, and we are working in conjunction with the city, and we are honored to say that we will be collaborating for HIV National Testing and Counseling Week, which will be from June 24th through the We're located at 5149 West Jefferson Boulevard, Los Angeles, California, 916. Our phone number is area code 323-936-4949. We will also be located doing testing on the 27th, which is a Monday, on Slauson and Western in South Central Los Angeles, and we will be giving 100 tickets away to the Magic Johnson, the celebrity basketball game, to the community, the first 100 testers. It is very important that individuals understand that getting tested and being educated on your status will help the community also. Seeing that one person takes initiative to find out what's going on with theirself, it actually helps others come in and find out whether they're positive or not.
Thank you, Nikia, Steve Simon, City AIDS Coordinator. I'll be brief and not run long. We will do a presentation next week to give you some more details on the National HIV Counseling and Testing Week. Just know, across the US, we've hit a million HIV infections, and a quarter of them probably don't know it, because people don't get tested. We need to make sure the message is, every single Angelino needs to get tested, not because you're high-risk, not because you're a certain demographic, everyone needs to get tested. And my office will work with MAP and other community-based organizations to make sure that testing's available. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Garcetti?
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Simon, and thank you very much to Minority AIDS Project. I know we've talked about that a lot here, doesn't matter who you are, you should get that test, young, old, whether you're white, black, brown, whatever. Glad, Nikia, you gave me my test this morning, thank you for doing that, I look forward to seeing all of Los Angeles joining, because it's so critical, and we thank you for all the great work you're doing in this week to publicize that and get that word out there. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
This concludes public comment for today's meeting. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Next item on the agenda are items for which public hearings have been held, items 1 through 31. Item number 24, report has been submitted. On item number 25, the hearing date on that item is, needs to be changed to August 3rd, 2005, because that was continued from a previous meeting.
Okay, and have you also seen an amending motion for 5/27?
Yes, there is an amending motion on 27 that has been distributed to the council members, and I believe also there's a members, and I believe also there's a request on item number 26 to change that hearing date to July 26th.
Okay. Colleagues, items 1 through 31. Now, before us, public hearings have been held on these items in committee. A motion from the floor would be required to reopen the public hearings. Seeing no such motion, do we have any requests for specials? Mr. Smith?
26 for an amendment.
26. Different amendment than what's been circulated, Mr. Smith?
26 wasn't circulated, but that was the hearing date that was changed to July 26th.
Okay. So we'll consider item 26 as amended with the new hearing date, same as item 25, new hearing date. 27 has an amending motion that has been circulated. Mr. Garcetti.
22, please, which, I know it's not before us, but probably goes hand-in-hand with 32 when that comes up.
Okay. Item 22, call special by Mr. Garcetti. Ms. Perry?
And also this...
Okay. Madam Clark?
I'm sorry, Mr. President. Item number 1, that's a confirmation for the general manager of El Perlo. Do you wish to call that special, or do you wish to take that up with the rest of the matters?
Members, I need you to desire to call item 1 special. If not, he's no stranger to the city family. In the interest of time, let's move forward. Items 1 through 31. The balance of the items, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Those are approved. For with on items 1 and 2, please. Next item.
Next items are items for which public hearings have not been held, items 32 through 53.
32 through 53. Now before us, I do have cards on items 32, 44, and 51. We can call those items special for a joint public hearing on those items. Colleagues, any requests for specials? 44, call special by Ms. Perry. On all of these items, I do not have, on the balance of the items, I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council. Public hearings are open and closed. Any other specials? Seeing none on the balance of the items, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Those are approved. Items 54 and 55 are closed session items. We'll hold those on the desk. Next items, please.
Next items on the supplemental agenda are items 56 and 57. Those are items for which public hearings have not been held, and votes are required for consideration.
And I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council on these items. Public hearings are open and closed. Without objection, items 56 and 57 now before the council. Requests for specials, colleagues? Seeing none. Let's open the roll on those two items, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Those are approved. Before moving forward, Ms. Misakowski moves reconsideration, items 51 and 52 from Friday's agenda. That's the establishing of the special election dates for the 10th and the 14th council districts.
And for council's information and for the record, the council file numbers on those are 05, 10, 19, and 05, 11, 64.
Okay. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote. Okay. Those items are now back before us. Let's reopen the roll on those ordinances, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay. Those matters are now approved on first reading. Let's send these items forthwith, please. Madam Clark, next item.
Next item, Mr. President. Item number 22 was called special by Councilmember Garcetti.
But before we take this up, because it does relate to item 32, let's conduct a joint public hearing for items 32, 44, and 51. Ms. Sylvia Lynn Hawkins.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Ms. Sylvia Lynn Hawkins. On number 1, 32, we begin to say no. No more metro links or commute because of gasoline prices is out of order. Using natural gas is causing the people eyesight to leave them. Please no surgeries with lens contacts or eyeglasses at this time. Natural gas is also causing all men trying not to breathe. We must leave all tenant windows and bulletproof of cars, for it is causing heart attacks. Escalators must be built now on top of main streets so that we can see the people walking and breathing again. On number 51, we'll also say no concerning our map trap. No on car maps or yellow pages on Internet computer only. The danger zone of maps, misdirection in cars, other people who may be following you with wireless connection to speak through your car maps and lead you to an unknown land to kidnap and control the area. On number 44, I would say yes concerning school violence and establishing the mechanic of violence and prevention. We must use dispatch radios and picture radios if needed.
Let me ask it to...
We also stand in need of public speaker to address all school districts, teachers, students. I'm here to say I am available at this time. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. This concludes public comment on items 32, 44, and 51. Colleagues, item 32 shall be considered with item 22 concurrently in just a second. Item 44 had been called special by Ms. Perry. Let's open the roll on item 51 at this time. Item 51, roll is open. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
That is approved. Let's now come back to items 22 and 32 and consider them jointly. Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I see Mr. Deaton back there. I don't know, Mr. Deaton, if you want to come forward to the table, just ask a couple of questions on the oversight here. Mr. Deaton? Will you hold my time for a second? Mr. Deaton? Okay. I'm sorry. Can I ask you a couple of questions on this item, on 22 and 32? Do you have a second? Oh, I'm sorry. There's here. Excuse me. If I can ask, they have the answers? All right. Listen to them. Just a couple of things for the department. This is something that makes, seems to make a lot of sense for us. We've been already hedging on natural gas fields. Is that correct? And this gives us some control and some power over directly acquiring that in this partnership. Could you just give us a little summary of that, maybe, for the council real quick? Or, Mr. Deaton?
Henry Martinez, Chief Operating Officer. Mr. Garcetti, yes, this is a particular contract or approval that we're trying to seek from the council, is to engage through an acquisition process of natural gas on a long-term basis for the city of Los Angeles and establish a base by which we can actually, on a long-term basis, control the price of natural gas delivered to our power plants. This will enable us to basically share the risk between many other cities in Southern California and also the Torus Irrigation District. And through SCAP, basically being the one company or the one agency per se that aggregates the stars of the cities and establishes the mechanisms to make that happen.
And I think that makes great sense for our ratepayers and obviously for control and some stability in the prices that we pay that we'll have from the moment that gas comes out of the ground to the moment somebody turns on a light, we'll have control along much of the way, if not all the way. How will the public or the council learn of acquisitions made by the partnership as we go forward in looking at this?
Well, first of all, the council will learn through the, the department will be submitting the proposals to our Board of Commissioners for approval.
Whenever there's any purchase at all?
Correct. Yeah. We, since all these are long-term contracts and they're significant in order of magnitude and dollar-wise, that we've brought to the council, or, I'm sorry, for the commission for approval.
Yeah. Does that add to that?
Yes. Randy Howard, Department of Water Power. The other activity will be, as we go forward in our budgeting, our annual budgets, we will identify funds that could be used for capital acquisitions for natural gas that would make sense for any opportunities we might see.
But then the actual purchases throughout the year, the board will always have to approve that?
Yeah. We have, currently, we have on a short-term basis, up to five years, we have the delegate authority to enter into those type of smaller type of hedging or short-term purchases. Long-term purchases will be going back to the commission.
Okay. So there will be with those smaller ones, just the department will have the power to do that?
And we currently do, you know, have that.
But will there be any, it's not so much also just a power thing, will there be information? How will somebody, if we are interested, if general public is interested, how would they be informed about that? Is that something that you regularly, once a purchase is made, inform?
Well, we aggregate that as part of our budget, and the issue for us, an issue of a transaction is to his specific objectives, and that is basically to keep the gas prices stable on a long-term basis. And these are a blend of capacity that we would, I'm sorry, a blended cost of natural gas that we include in the assumptions that we submit for the budget, so that indeed when the council approves the information, approves a budget, it has the assumptions of what the natural gas prices will be. The information's available if somebody's interested in looking into it once the transactions are done, and we can show the average cost of natural gas for the production of power.
Okay. If, in the future, if there's any regulation of carbon sources or carbon-based sources of fuel, will the value of any of our equity positions be reduced greatly? And, you know, as the DWP's, with the investments that we've put in coal, which is out there already, and then this coupled with it, would that be something that would put us in a precarious financial situation?
Not as a direct deal of this particular transaction we're looking at entering. I think the carbon, eight-carbon tax, for instance, that may be implemented, will be applied, I think, over and above everything else that we do, and I think it'll be something that we'll consider on a long-term basis to evaluate the sources of power for the future. But I don't see this particular, particular deal that is being discussed currently will have any effect on future levels with coal.
I'd like to add to that as well, knowing that, from a fossil fuel perspective, natural gas by far is the cleanest with the least amount of carbon emissions that would come out of it. So actually, to our ratepayers, it would be an advantage to having a lower-cost alternative fuel versus coal.
Right. It's definitely superior to coal, and it's, if the regulation of some carbon emissions comes in, that's obviously still somewhat of a debit, but not as much.
That is correct.
So I'm sure you're balancing that out with other sources of power as well as we move forward.
Sure. I think we have other members.
Okay. So that's all my questions. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Before calling on the next member, apologize, Ms. Perry has a very special introduction.
For the commercial break, like many of us, we all have role models, and especially for women in politics, we're always looking for good, strong role models. And I am pleased to recognize my mother, who's visiting here today. Her name is Betty Perry, and she's here from the state of Ohio for my swearing-in, which is this Thursday, at 8:15 at the Accelerated School. I hope you'll all join us, and I'll be talking a little bit about what accomplishments of mine. Both of my parents, my mother was the mayor and councilperson in the city where we lived, and I think her indelible mark on me is demonstrated in the fact that I'm sitting here today. So thank you for welcoming her here to the council chamber in our great city, and I hope you'll all join us on Thursday. We have a surprise performance, which I think you'll all find impassioned and compelling and dramatic and also shocking. So please join us. Thank you.
That's a teaser. Returning to the item before us, let me recognize Ms. Hahn, followed by Mr. Carravans, Mr. Labange, and...
Yes. I just want to clarify, because you seem to indicate, unless I misheard you, that this was only for the ability for DWP to enter into short-term contracts, which, under our charter, you're able to do anyway, and so council doesn't currently review short-term contracts. Or is, in fact, this giving DWP the ability to acquire future gas fields which would enter into long-term contracts? Because I don't see that anywhere in the ordinance, and maybe you could point to where that is.
Well, the ordinance is asking the council to approve the department to enter into discussions with SCAP, which basically is the authority, this financial authority, to have long-term procurement of natural gas. Now, the enabling agreement basically allows the department to have firm discussions with SCAP to, for long-term, not for short-term. For short-term, we're doing it ourselves.
So if there was, so if you entered into an agreement for a long-term contract, this ordinance, okay, you're shaking your head, Randy.
No, I just think that there needs to be a distinction. The contract relative to purchasing the gas field isn't before the council, because it's a purchase of real property, and the charter allows the Water and Power, gives that authority to the Water and Power Commission. This ordinance is to allow us to enter into an agreement with SCAP for a long-term operation of that field or other fields. Now, if we had a second deal, and it involves obtaining that with a long-term lease, let's say it was a 50-year lease for that, then we would require it under the charter to come back to the council for that purpose, to get that approved. If we had a situation where we were purchasing again, then that wouldn't come to council, and the only way would be a Prop 245.
If you're purchasing what?
Real property.
But that doesn't, that doesn't get us into a long-term contract.
No. The issue, for example, though, if for some reason we could purchase the gas field and operate it ourselves, then that provision, the provisions of the charter would not then require it to come to council. But since we, our expertise isn't in operating gas fields, there's two pieces to this, and the SCAP agreement is going to take care of the operations, and the commission...
I mean, I think, members, I think part of my concern is, you know, nobody has this agreement. I mean, wasn't, that wasn't in committee, we don't have it before us now. I mean, I think there is a sense, particularly in light of what happened in the state of California and entering into long-term contracts, that it does seem a little bit like this ordinance gives you an ability to do some stuff without coming back for council approval. I'm a little concerned about that, except for Prop 5-ing something. You know, I think we're moving into an era where, you know, that makes a lot of people feel uncomfortable, and I'm always on the side of more council oversight, more council of approval, particularly if you said we purchased the field, and then by purchasing the field, that allows us to get into, you know, some long-term contracts without having come back to the council. I think there's confusion, again, because nobody sees the agreement. So I'm uncomfortable voting on this without the agreement, so that we could actually look at it.
The agreement that's before you today does not allow the department to acquire anything. We're not asking for the authority to acquire. What we're seeking is the opportunity to jointly with other cities, Southern California cities, through Southern California Public Power Authority, to look at opportunities for acquisition that might give us some level of independence. So there's a part of it that allows us to hire the right consultants and the folks to help us look for those opportunities. The other piece of it is, if we were to find an opportunity that we felt brought value to the ratepayers, that we would take that opportunity before our Board of Commissioners for an actual acquisition. But what you have would allow us then to operate jointly with the other cities under the SCAP umbrella. Right now, this agreement has been approved by the cities of Glendale.
And as part of that operating, as part of that ability to enter into some long-term contracts.
Correct. But this agreement does not allow us in itself to acquire anything.
But the unintended consequence of this is that, in fact, you might be able to do that in the future without coming back for council approval.
No.
Is that right?
The charter...
Just answer me that. Is that possible?
No.
No.
The fact is that the charter today allows the Water and Power Commission to purchase property.
Right.
So if we were forgetting for a moment on this particular situation, that forgetting the operation of that field, it does not come, that transaction does not come to the city council. The transaction of buying the gas does not come to the council. What is coming to the council is the enabling legislation, enabling agreement, if you will, to operate that field. If in the future we obtained a gas field by a long-term lease, then it would come to the council. If day after tomorrow, there was, the Water and Power Commission could go buy Gas Field B as a real property and not come to the council. But in this instance, there was, there's a need to operate it, and since, I think in each case, what this does permit is, I believe, the ability for us through SCAP, if we did purchase Gas Field B and went to the commission, this legislate, this ordinance would enable us to use SCAP to operate that field without coming back to the council, but not for the purchase.
Yeah. Well, it's, again, I'm uncomfortable not having that come back to the council. I'm also uncomfortable that we don't, is this agreement sort of a secret document? Or why haven't we been able to see this agreement?
No, it's not a... Not at all. Let me just explain. My view was that I would feel much better if both agreements were coming to the Los Angeles City Council. I made that crystal clear. I was, I was told by the city attorney that it would not be in accordance with the charter to... to, on the purchase, that the only way the council can get jurisdiction is under 245.
I know, and I'm uncomfortable with that.
I was more than willing to go with a recommendation to the Board of Water and Power Commissioners, saying that this transaction is subject to approval of the council.
Yeah.
And the city attorney said no.
Well, I mean, members, I would like to, I'm not prepared to, to vote in favor of this. I mean, I think maybe we need the city attorney to come down and explain why it shouldn't go for review of the council. And I, again, and I also don't understand why we haven't been privy to this actual language in the agreement, so we can look at it for ourselves. Seems to me like there's a little vagueness in terms of what this does or does not allow, and whether or not it should come before, before the city council.
Here's Fred Merkin in the, in the... Hello, Fred. Would you like to join us?
Yes. And Mr. Deaton, thank you very much. Mr. President, members of the council, Fred Merkin, outside, council assistant, city attorney. I think the question has to do with the authority of the city council, and I think Mr. Deaton explained that the approval of this particular purchase does not require city council approval. And the question was asked was whether there was some way in which council approval could be affected. And absent a charter change, that cannot be done. The Water Power Commission, which has the charter responsibility for making such purchases, does not have the authority to transfer away its own authority. It cannot delegate it to the city council, to the mayor, to any other body. It is the responsibility of that board under the city charter to make these decisions. And that is the advice that was given to Mr. Deaton on this subject.
I think, I think the issue that I have a problem with is, I'm reading where it says, neither the agreement nor the ordinance, which by the way, we did not have before us in committee, defines the specific terms and conditions of future acquisitions, or the number of potential transactions in which the parties may enter while the agreement is in effect. I mean, that's language I think, members, we should all be a little wary of. This agreement does not lay out specific conditions. And again, I think it's the unintended consequences that we get into. Yeah, we're giving you the permission to, to buy a future gas field, but again, once that happens, what agreements can you get into? What different parties are going to be now partnering with the city of Los Angeles? That again, council is not going to have any oversight over. So, you know, that, that line makes me, me very nervous.
I could mention that bear in mind, there is Charter Section 245. Charter Section 245 is an overlay that, that provides authority within the council to veto.
I agree. That's, I agree, we always have that. But I think when we enter into something like this, this is a little kind of unchartered territory. I like the idea of this coming back to council, you know, for our approval when, when you enter into these types of agreements.
Let me clarify something. You, you made a statement as to the boundaries and not knowing quantities. Within Exhibit B of this agreement, it...
Which we haven't seen.
Not the agreement that's before you today.
Which we don't have.
The, the SCAPA Operating Agency Agreement? It, it was before the CNR committee last week.
We don't, have not seen the agreement.
I'm sorry, but I believe it was, it has been transferred to the city clerk.
Is that part of the council file?
Item number 20.
I don't believe we had that agreement before us to look at in Commerce.
Is that part of the file?
I believe the entire package was put together, and it was before the committee, CNR, last week. I understand that the ordinance didn't arrive from city attorneys.
Yeah, the ordinance, we did not have the ordinance before us.
In, in time for the actual meeting. But the, the agreement itself was, within it, there's an Exhibit B...
What's the agreement?
That limits the department's ability in this project to 35,000 MMBTUs per day. That is approximately 15%, 15% of our average daily gas usage. This contract, this agreement is limited to 15% or less. So there, there are boundaries as to the quantity. And this agreement is to replace an existing agreement that is expiring, a 15-year, long-term contract with Duke Energy Trading that is expiring in 2007, for a similar quantity. So for 15 years, we have been buying gas through Duke Energy Trading. We're now looking at this as a different, transferring that quantity of gas and looking for acquisitions under this agreement. So there, there is some, some very firm boundaries as to our abilities to do activity in this agreement.
Well, why, why does, can you just, and then I know I'll sit down because I'm over, but why does this say neither the agreement nor the ordinance defines the specific terms and conditions of future acquisitions?
I don't know what you're reading from.
I'm reading from our, our CIO report.
I'm sorry, I'm not familiar with the CIO report.
Well, that being said, I think the, the intent has been, is that this, this is the first one, there's no question about this, this may be the first one. If there are other opportunities, which we anticipate in the gas acquisition, that we future opportunities, it enables DWP to explore those opportunities and still make a decision, a comprehensive decision as to how it fits in, and establishes the, the issue of the, of the chain of natural gas that the city's going to require to burn for several years to incorporate that in there. But it's still going to have to be a separate deal. This is just nothing more than enabling the city to do that, and this is all we're asking.
Mr. Cartanis.
Yeah, I think what that CIO report is referring to, and that language that Janice Han read to you twice, is that, I'm sorry, the CLA report, is that what we're discussing, and the language before us, is not actually an agreement with a third-party entity that's selling us gas through SCAPA. I think that's what that is referring to.
That's correct.
Basically, what we are discussing today is the umbrella, which is SCAPA, which is, sounds like something you would go to a dermatologist for. But since most people don't know what SCAPA is, can you briefly tell us what SCAPA is? You, you briefly started to let us know a few minutes ago that we have in fact been using another entity that SCAPA will now be replacing as a process.
Yes. Southern California Public Power Authority was formed in about 1980 under state law, and, and it was formed for the purposes of the municipal utilities being able to come together on large joint projects. They have financed a little over $9 billion in activity, including Intermountain Power Project, some upgrades to Hoover Dam, the transmission line coming down from Intermountain Power Project. It's where we can jointly share some of the risk and some of the benefits with our fellow cities around us. And we are all suffering right now with these price increases and the instability in gas pricing, that we came together about a year ago, looking at other alternatives that we could jointly leverage ourselves to, to lower our cost of fuel for our ratepayers. And so that's what's before you now, is, is the agreement between the other cities. Now, SCAPA is, they have a staff of five. So the largest city in the project, under the SCAPA umbrella, becomes the project manager. I am the project manager on behalf of SCAPA for this, and we run the project for the other cities.
Also, individual contracts, we can 245 them. If SCAPA takes action and wants to enter in an agreement to buy some gas, whether it be on a three-year basis, 10-year basis, whatever that contract happens to be, we can actually 245 it, and the city council can actually say, okay, or we can say no.
Our internal process will be to send any contract of significance, again, to the council, to our commission. Once it's agendized, approved with the commission, council has the right to be able to recall it and modify it.
Correct. So there is a mechanism. There is a mechanism already in place. Another thing that I'd like to point out, we've been pushing the Department of Water and Power, at least for some years, and since I've been here, and as, as chairman of the Commerce Committee, I've been pushing for you to adopt a renewable portfolio standard. Unbeknownst to a lot of people, when you think of renewable energy, you think about wind power, photovoltaic, all these other technologies. Also, it is well-recognized within the environmental community, the state of California, the Department of Water and Power, the independent operators of, of power energy in, in California, that when you do have a plant or a facility that's providing clean energy, what else can you use for that reliability? What other facility can you have on that plant? And what kind of fossil fuel are they using?
Well, for the most part, it's...
And what percentage?
Yeah.
To stay within the guidelines of that is clean energy coming to the department.
Well, there is a, an added 25%, there's an aggregate that a renewable energy that can augment the power production with natural gas, up to 25% and still qualify under the renewable portfolio standard. So, for instance, if you have a, a gasified plant or a methane gas plant that would be from a landfill, and it produces 10 megawatts, and for whatever reason, you run short of gas, they can, they can add 20, up to 25% of natural gas and still classify as renewable.
So our ability to hedge our bets and buy gas into the future, and if we're fortunate, smart, and maybe even a little lucky, we could actually be getting gas in a year, or two, or three, or four, or five, at a price much lower than other people are having to buy that gas, which means we can produce cheaper energy for our constituents, and also complement that energy with perhaps a more expensive, cleaner energy, which we're already asking you to do, correct?
That is correct.
The, the reason why I point that out is because what is before us, members, is the disagreement with other cities for SCAPA to move forward and to be able to buy gas, hopefully at a cheaper price for longer-term periods. By the way, what, what has been the, the natural gas price volatility? For example, what is it today, and what was it six months ago, roughly? What was it 12 months ago? And do we depend on that gas on a daily basis? My time?
Yes, we, we do depend on that gas on a daily basis in order to provide the reliability of our system. And the volatility this year, to give you an example, in the '05-'06 budget before our board today, is a budget of $433 million for next year's natural gas purchases and delivery. And that is up substantially from previous years. Yesterday hit an all-time high for natural gas, as to where we're seeing the curves going into the long term. So we are up almost 50% in the last two years in natural gas cost.
Somebody just told me recently that natural gas was at $4 not too long ago, and now it's at 8. Is that true?
The forward NYMEX curve for the next year is at 803.
$8.03?
That is correct.
And what was it conceivably at the lower end in the last couple of years?
Approximately three years ago, it's, two years ago, we were, we were in the $4 range.
So it's doubled. And that is beyond our control. And what SCAPA is going to try to do is bring some stability, hopefully, to that volatility, so that we can make sure that we keep our, our energy coming in and our prices reasonable for our constituents.
The, yeah, one of the things we have noticed is we've, we've found that through mergers and acquisitions that have been going on in the industry, there's less counterparties for the department, and we are the single-largest purchaser of natural gas in California, I believe, at this point. And we are held hostage a number of times. This would give us a level of independence, we believe, if we were able to acquire some natural gas through acquisitions such as ownership of fields.
This particular deal also is strategically a placeholder, basically starts us in a new wave of acquisitions that, again, establishes us in a different parameter of controlling natural gas, rather than being a taker. Now we can bounce off prices against a backstop. Where before, we were totally exposed and totally based upon what the market was bearing. So it gives us a cloud. It gives us the stability, it gives us an anchor. And, and basically, for the future, it puts us in a different parameter than most buyers in the market today.
So the, the bottom line, council members, what we have before us is an opportunity for SCAPA, the Department of Water and Power, and their staff to do much more due diligence in making sure that we keep our prices down, and hopefully, we are good at predicting what the future prices are, and we're able to buy natural gas at a much lower rate than we would have to in the future. Secondly, we do have a mechanism to bring those actual contracts, when and if they occur, to bring them before the city council, to double-check and make sure that they are doing what they're supposed to. So I, I'm in favor of this, and I'm glad we're having this fruitful discussion.
Mr. Labange.
I just, I rise to say I'm in favor of this too, and I also say too, we're talking to the Department of Water and Power, a city-run agency, and that it's your obligation to come back, and your requirement to come back, keep us informed.
No, they have no obligation.
Well, that's what I'm asking, and they've agreed to that, correct? Is that where you're going to come back and when you, when you keep us posted on this progress? Because that's what I've been listing there.
Well, I think what we said is that the council always has the right to call, to Prop 5.
Right.
If you want an independent report of water transactions, then the council can always ask us to do that. I, I think the issue here is...
But I don't, I don't, I mean, I, I support what you're trying to do today, but I just want you to tell us more. Mr. Cartanis, I mean, do you have a regular update from Mr. Martinez on issues like this?
We do on occasion, and we can, whenever we want to, in our committee, to get reports from the Department of Water and Power.
Yeah.
While they're having discussions, before they take action, after they take action, et cetera. But the thing, the question, the question, Ms. Han, and to all of us, is, can SCAPA act independently without the board having to ratify their actions? That's the, that's the key question.
Well, let me ask you a question, Mr. Chair, if I could. Can we just ask, because I think energy is going to be a bigger issue in the years ahead than even the last time we had the challenges, that you would just, not quarterly or three times a year, just get a check-in with where we are on situation, not just this particular issue, but other issues as it relates to power?
In a very, basically, Mr. Labange, we can and will be having them report to us.
I thank you so much, because I think that's the whole thing. Because if we were not talking to the Department of Water and Power, we'd be talking to Duke Energy, which isn't owned by the people of Los Angeles. We're talking to the Department of Water and Power, which is the people's utility for Los Angeles. So I just wanted to thank you, but just keep us informed, because there's an old axiom, information is knowledge is power. And you're in the power of this, so if you give us the information, it gives us the knowledge to do the right thing, as we provide for the people of Los Angeles. Thank you.
Ms. Han.
Well, I was just going to have Jerry Miller come to the table and just maybe explain a little bit. Of course, again, and, you know, thanks for this, but again, this was not available at committee. And frankly, the CLA notes wrote, with also out the, they said they had not received the agreement or the ordinance. So again, we're proving something pretty far-reaching here, and I don't, I know my fellow members have not read the agreement. So could you, I mean, there was just one line in there about, there was no specific defined terms. And again, I think the big question, Councilmember Cartanis said it, is, you know, future predictions. Well, gee, if we all could bank on future predictions, you know, that, that would be a whole different world. But that was clearly what happened with the energy crisis for the whole state of California. I mean, you're in a crisis, you're looking to do long-term contracts, no one can predict the future price, and that's what got us in trouble in the state of California. I just was uncomfortable with this, with this agreement. And, you know, a lot of the other cities have signed on to this, but it's, it's true that the CLA is going to own a much larger share, right? Something like 76%.
Correct.
So a lot of these little cities, of course, are going to, you know, get into the, under the umbrella of SCAPA. It's in their best interest. We're going to bear the lion's share of this. And again, I was just trying to figure out a way, as, as Tom said, that we could have a little more council oversight. But Tom, literally, they have no obligation to come back. Certainly Commerce can always continually ask for an update, a report, but there's no obligation, as they said. You, you want to look at this, Prop 5 it. That, that was their response.
The, the request before you today is for 15% of our average daily gas usage, and no more. The balance is handled through all the other activities.
Right.
And again, the department has similar agreements as to coal. We do own some of the coal assets as well, and we have a history of, of buying some of that fuel source at the mine itself.
I, I just want to hear from the CLA, was there concerns? I mean, you know, we, we read your notes, we, we pay attention to what, to what you're saying. I mean, you're sort of advising the council. Was there concerns from the CLAs for, for this agreement?
Well, the notes you're referring to, I think, really were, we're looking at the potential future transaction that will be before the board, and, and bringing up concerns that we are going to be looking at with, with a deal that the board is expected to consider. But what is before you is essentially a co-op agreement that would enable the various cities to move forward and, and operate these types of facilities. I mean, the fact of the matter is, the DWP could on its own go out and, and make this acquisition themselves, and incur all of the, the costs and all of the financial liability with the agreement with SCAPA, should they proceed on, on the deal that's being contemplated. That, that, those costs and risks are spread amongst the various SCAPA entities. Now, the reason that the, the individual terms of, of particular deals are not spelled out here is because those would have to be approved by the board. Now, if it's, if it's an acquisition of real property, according to the charter, the council doesn't have any role in that unless the council chooses to Prop 245 it. They could also enter into long-term leases on, on similar deals in the future. If it's a long-term lease, then under the charter, that would come to the council. So the, the individual merits and risks of individual deals, as they come forward to either the board or the council, depending upon the nature of the deal, is what would be before you at the time. But all this is, is essentially a co-op agreement with the various SCAPA entities.
Ms. Sikowski.
I, I think, as Mr. Miller just explained it, this is just a co-op agreement...
I think, as Mr. Miller just explained it, this is just a co-op agreement with the various entities that are going to be at the best interest, not only for themselves, but for others, to get the best available options at the best available price for our ratepayers. We had a matter in committee this morning that was talking about renewable resources. And as Mr. Cardenas grilled the staff for about 40 minutes on that white item, he asked a lot of questions about cost, about short-term, about long-term, and ultimately about what is the best mix to meet our 20% goal. In all of that, it's always in the long-term best interest of DWP to be looking with a lot of foresight, to be looking at the most advantageous deals. We are always going to be needing some portion, hopefully less rather than more, of natural gas. And having an option, with the limit you already heard that they have, of owning some of our fields ourselves, rather than going through a third-party intermediary, rather than dealing with other variances in the system, this makes sense. There is no problem with us asking for whether quarterly report, a semi-annual report, where are we doing, how are the contracts doing, how does that measure up according, against what else is out there in the market? Did we lock in something? Didn't we lock in? Shouldn't we? I mean, the truth is, they have to do their best. Sometimes it's the best in going long-term contracts, and sometimes short-term availabilities yield, you know, more better economics. But that's not always the case. They have to make a balance and a mix and an assessment of both of those things. We need to let them be doing that, but we need to be knowing it, and we need to be questioning it, and we need to be shaking it. I don't think we can create an impediment that everything has to come to us first before they take an option and make an agreement. But knowing about it and then saying, okay, but, you know, we want to change that on the next course around, go it this way, just like we did with 20% renewable. It wasn't something that they would have come to under their own. It took state legislation, it took us to say, push, push, push. And even on the council, we pushed a little bit of what, you know, should something that's already renewable count or not count towards that 20%. Those are the kinds of policy debates we can have. But I think this is something that should go forward as it's presented, and then ask, just amend, that at least let's start on a quarterly basis, DWP come back in terms of the, what they're doing, where they are, how it's working, how these authorities work, and what they're buying, and what, in part of our overall portfolio, it is filling up what portion and how long that contract for that, those agreements are. So, then I think we get the input, and if there's something else that happens aside from that, that we have a question about, we always have the opportunity to take it up. But it really should be, as a policy thing, being brought to our attention to understand how it's being managed and what they're doing with it.
Do you want a second on that quarter?
Certainly.
Mr. Cardenas?
Yes, thank you. I think this is a great discussion, because I think the public needs to understand how intricate and how involved it is for us to be able to turn on the light switch every day, or open up our faucet and have that water there reliable, clean, and on time. But the most important thing that is before us for us to understand this, some concerns have been raised by some council members as to whether or not we have the checks and balances necessary so we won't have SCAPPA being able to run off and do their thing and then tell everybody, "Look, don't bother me, I'm busy, I'm acquiring, you know, gas fields, I'm doing all this thing, trust me, everything is just fine." That's not the way it is. Whatever SCAPPA does, and this is the question, if SCAPPA enters into a contract, can it be ratified and completed without the board having to take a vote on it?
No. First of all, SCAPPA cannot do anything independent on their own. They have to have two members of SCAPPA to initiate a project, a minimum of two members.
Okay, now, that's within SCAPPA.
Within SCAPPA. Thus, it began the process. But also, we have to have authority from our board to enter into any kind of agreements with anybody in this particular case.
Correct? The board?
Yes.
It cannot be ratified and completed and be a bona fide agreement that goes into the future without the board having to ratify it?
The board must act.
They must act. They take a vote on that. And as soon as the board takes a vote on anything, let's say before the people of Los Angeles, when the board of Department of Water and Power takes a vote on anything, at that moment in time, can the city council take jurisdiction of that item?
Yes.
Yes, as soon as that happens. So, technically speaking, without question, we have the check and balance of making sure that if we want to look at it formally and legally, we can bring that into our purview, and we can cut it, we can vote it down or agree with them, correct?
Correct.
And in addition to that, I just want to make sure that we understand, when I told Mr. Labonge, he asked me a question, yes, my committee, as members of the city council, we will be monitoring this and many other things to make sure that we stay on top of things, to make sure that we are asking questions and getting reports even before agreements are signed. Okay? And if necessary, we want to talk about a specific agreement, then we'll go into, you know, a session with our attorneys to make sure that we ask those questions if we think it's time to ask those questions. And that, we have the purview to do, correct?
To go into closed session?
Yes.
That would depend on the situation. It could, well, it may be available to you.
Yep, but that's my point. If it gets too sticky and technical, where we might be divulging something that would hinder our ability to even have an agreement, if everything looks good, we would actually go into closed session. So, we have many opportunities to bring these issues before us. And this council, I think, over the last couple of years since I've been here, I've been very pleased to see our ability and willingness to roll up our sleeves and get involved in issues in the front end and on the back end and as they evolve. Thank you.
Other members wishing to be heard on these items? Seeing none, we're prepared for a vote. Colleagues, this is both items 22 and 32. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes, 1 no.
Okay, that is approved.
And, Mr. President, the order is over. One week, there was a no vote on that, so the order will go over.
Item 22 is approved. Item 32 does include the ordinance. That's the item that carries over for a second reading. Next item, please.
Item number 44 called special by Councilmember Perry.
Ms. Perry?
I just wanted to call attention to this. This motion was introduced as a result of our conversations here in the council and also with the students at Jefferson High and the faculty as well, serving as a template for future preparations so that we can work more effectively with LAUSD to pool our resources and to be anticipatory rather than reactionary and then depleting our tactical resources, our counseling resources, and try to be proactive. So, I look forward to bringing back a good report from Human Relations Commission, LAUSD, and all the other involved city departments on addressing school violence. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. Other members wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none, let's open the roll on item 44, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay, that item is approved. Next item, please.
Mr. President, do we should clear the desk before going into closed session?
Let's do housekeeping.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Motion shall be posted and referred.
There are excuses on the desk. Councilmembers Zion requests to be excused Wednesday, June 22 to arrive at 10:40. A motion is required.
Mr. Smith moves. Mr. Zion is excused.
And also, Mr. Zion requests to be excused August 9, 10, 12, and 16. A motion is required on the request for the 16th, and that is for personal business.
Okay, Mr. Cardenas moves. Mr. Zion is excused.
And Councilmember Labonge requests to be excused Tuesday, July 5 for personal business. That meets council policy.
Mr. Labonge is excused.
And that clears the desk for closed session.
Okay. Anything before going into closed session? Ms. Smitsakowski?
I just wanted to make sure that item 24 was sent forthwith.
Forthwith on 24. Colleagues, anything else before going into closed session? If not, then in conformance with California law, the council will now adjourn to closed session. Sergeants, please clear the chambers. Madam Clerk, item 40, please.
Yes, Mr. President, that's item number 55, and the city attorney has a report on that matter.
Mr. City Attorney.
Counsel is voting on the stipulation which continues the terms of the original 1993 settlement, removes provisions related to property no longer owned by the developer, requires the developer to pay additional amounts for environmental purposes, and extends the term of the stipulation 15 years from the date of the entry of judgment relating to this stipulation.
Okay, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
That is approved. Ms. Smitsakowski, next item, please.
And that clears the desk, Mr. President.
Okay. Colleagues, it's the end of our agenda today. Do we have any announcements? Announcements?
Yes, I got an announcement.
Mr. Labonge?
Today is the first day of summer. It's the longest day of the year. It's the 21st of June, and it's been a long day. But it's the longest day of the year, the 21st of June, and we have our solstice, summer solstice, hike at Griffith Park, meet at the observatory, and we walk, parking lot, walk up to Mount Hollywood for a 360-degree view of the great city of the angels. So, everyone's welcome to come. There'll be many of our sister cities and concerts there as we salute our international flavor in Los Angeles. Happy summer to everybody.
Other announcements? Ms. Zion?
I have an introduction to make at this late hour to Chief Mark Lund, California Air Patrol Coastal Division out of San Luis Obispo, and longtime resident of the city of Los Angeles, a distinguished man who I've known for many years, when he had black hair and I had hair. That's how far we go back.
Why don't you take him as our chipper?
Other announcements? Colleagues? If not, please rise for adjourning motions.
Yes.
Ms. Gruel?
Thank you, Mr. Padilla. It's great sadness that I ask that we adjourn in memory of Lazar Bernard, who passed away on June 12, 2005. He was born in Fort Worth, Texas, on August 12, 1908, and died of natural causes at his home, actually, in Ms. Smitsakowski's district. He was 96 years old. I had the pleasure of knowing his wife very well from my Gold Shield days at UCLA. He was a resident of Los Angeles from 1922 until his death. He attended Los Angeles High School and graduated from Stanford University and Stanford Law School. He was awarded a Carnegie Medal 75 years ago for rescuing a drowning man in Santa Monica Bay. That man, Carl Blake, lived 50 more years after the rescue. He used the unexpected $1,500 from the Carnegie Fund to go to law school. He later asked the Carnegie Fund if he could make a donation back because the organization's generosity had helped him so much. He was told that they were never offered money before, and later, the fund would only accept the same amount that they gave him. Because of this, Lazar became inspired to set up a scholarship at Stanford to help students pay for law school. During World War II, he served proudly in the U.S. Army and was honorably discharged with the rank of major. Subsequently, he was one of the founding partners in the law firm of Pact, Ross, Warren, Bernard, and Sears, where he practiced for over 50 years. He is survived by his wife Lenny, for over, his wife of 56 years, three children, John, Lori-Jo, and Paul, and three grandchildren and other family members. He will be missed and asked that we adjourn in his memory. Thank you.
Other tributes? Mr. Parks?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd ask that we adjourn in memory of Roy Harmon, former chief of police of City of Yuba City from 1983 to 1995. He worked there a total of 30 years before moving on to Rockport, Indiana, where, after short retirement, he became the chief of police in the, there in the year 2000. He is a graduate of the FBI National Academy, had a variety of degrees in the San Francisco University in Public Administration, also an expert in traffic education. He passed away Saturday, June 18, after extended battle with cancer. He will be laid to rest in Rockport, Indiana, at full military and police honors, where the department flag will be posted half-mast, both in Yuba City and in Rockport. He survived by, services are pending, he survived by his wife and son in Rockport, Indiana.
Ms. Perry?
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to adjourn in memory of Henry Luster Hall, who passed away at the age of 91. He lived on West 47th Street since 1957, when he purchased his home in the Vermont Square area. He attended Vermont Square United Methodist Church since 1957. And he is survived by three children, Essie Hall, Mac Hall, and Linda Hall, six grandchildren, four great-grandchildren, and a host of family and friends. His funeral service will be held Thursday, June 23, at 11:00 a.m. at Vermont Square United Methodist Church at 4410 Budlong Avenue. And his viewing is Wednesday, June 22, from 2:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. at Angela's Funeral Home on Crenshaw Boulevard.
Ms. Zion?
Mr. President, I have two adjourning motions, and the first is John Maximilian Stigler, Otto Stigler, the Mercedes-Benz dealer out in the San Fernando Valley. I got a call this morning, John passed away after a long stay at the hospital. John Stigler's journey to America began September 1921 with his birth in Czechoslovakia. John's parents were hard-working merchants and restaurateurs in Austria, handed down him the values of hard work and dedication, which he has carried through his life and passed along to his children, John Jr., Charles, and Gregory, and his nine grandchildren. In 1946, John married Adely Kaudish, and they worked together at Regina Hotel in Vienna. During their time at the hotel, excuse me, John befriended an American officer from Chicago, John Murphy, who sponsored the couple and helped them immigrate to the United States in 1952. Shortly after arriving in America, John found work at the Drake Hotel in Chicago. Then, in 1952, he welcomed the birth of his first child, John Jr. Always striving to provide a better life for his family, John decided he needed to move out west, and in 1953, took historic Route 66, made his way to California. He and his wife purchased their first home in 1954 and brought her parents from Vienna to help with raising their growing family, now included sons Charles and Gregory. Once in California, John had a vision of a Stigler family auto business, founded that business with a credo that he learned from his grandfather. Every person that comes through my door is a person who deserves to be treated like a king. So, in 1959, based on that principle, he founded Otto Stigler in Inglewood, soon thereafter moved to their present location in Encino. John spent 16 hours a day, seven days a week, at the dealership, but never wavered in his quest to provide a better life for his family. John M. Stigler has spent a lifetime serving people and working to make the world a better place for his family and all those around him. He will be truly missed by his wife, his three sons, nine grandchildren. May John Maximilian Stigler rest in peace.
All members?
All members. My second adjourning motion is for Michael Smith, passed away on Memorial Day, May 30. Michael Smith passed away while participating in the Memorial Day Parade in Canoga Park with the Old West Mounted Lawmen's Association from Ridgecrest. He was 53 years of age. Mr. Smith was born in 1952 in Oklahoma to Kenneth, Ivan, and Betty Jean Smith, was an engineer with DTM Raider in China Lake, commander with the United States Naval Reserve, and at the Naval Postgraduate School in Monterey, and served in Operation Iraqi Freedom at Prince Sultan Air Base in Saudi Arabia. Also skilled craftsman, hiker, camper, and enjoyed many things such as his 1950 Chevy Bel Air and 35-foot bayliner, moored at Oxnard Harbor. He will be greatly missed by all who knew and loved him. He is survived by his wife and a number of family members. He passed away at the beginning of the Canoga Park Memorial Day Parade. May Michael E. Smith rest in peace.
And colleagues, I ask you to join me in adjourning in memory of Arthur Ardi Mata Martinez, brother of our vote clerk, Anna Martinez. Ardi was born on May 6, 1951, in Compton, and passed away this past May 18 in San Pedro. He was a 45-year resident of Harbor City. He worked as a drug counselor for over 15 years. He enjoyed listening to music, he enjoyed cooking, dancing, writing poetry, wood carving, and a good game of poker. He was also an avid Dodger fan, as well as a boxing fan. He loved being with his family, particularly his grandchildren and his nieces, in order to share his life stories and adventures. He will be missed by those whose lives he touched. He survived by his wife Carol, his mother Agnes Martinez, his sons Gilbert, Arthur, and Angel, his daughter Rachel, his grandchildren Raymond, Alyssa, his brothers Michael and Leroy, his sisters Anna, Terry, and Peggy, as well as numerous nieces, nephews, godchildren, and many, many friends. All members. Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Thank you all very much. This meeting is adjourned.